Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Wednesday, August 27, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of considering an irrevocable license and conducting a work session on the Unified Development Code update.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for August 27, 2025. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprang.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is an action item, the irrevocable license of the U D Medical School at 500 Main Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Receive and file the documents and approve.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending City Council approval of an irrevocable license for the University of Dubuque at 500 Main Street to encroach in the public right-of-way as described in the license. This is in response to requests from the University of Dubuque to encroach on city property. The encroachments will include portions of the existing and proposed building and building foundation. An irrevocable or revocable license is required when proper owners request to encroach upon the public right-of-way. Examples of encroachments upon the public right-of-way can include planters, benches, fences, steps, awnings, windows, buildings, earthen embankments, ADA ramps, loading docks, private utilities, bollards, and sprinkler systems. The property at the northeast quadrant of Fifth Street and Main Street is being redeveloped by the University of Dubuque for the new John and Alice Butler College of Osteopathic Medicine. This building at 500 Main Street is the former Prudential Building. The existing building is being remodeled, and part of the work is to demolish and reconstruct the parts of the south and west facade to create a new building entrance. Portions of the existing building and foundation, as well as portions of the proposed building reconstruction, will encroach in the adjacent street, city street, right-of-way. Through this irrevocable license process, the encroachments will be recognized by the new owners, who assume all terms and conditions as defined in the license. All documents have been received from the University of Dubuque, including an exhibit, irrevocable license, insurance, and license fee. The Engineering Department, Planning Services, and Building Services have reviewed and approved the request for the continued operation of this encroachment. All public and private utilities owners affected by the encroachments have reviewed and approved the plans and have submitted signed consent forms. As part of the property redevelopment, the University of Dubuque will also be requesting approval for several minor right-of-way encroachments, including but not limited to a dumpster enclosure, HVAC systems, and steps and railings. These encroachments will be reviewed and approved administratively via the revocable license process. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Sprang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like this idea. I think it's good that the U D wants to make the building their own. My only question is, they're not going to be able to, like, block the right-of-way for tra- like, block the view for traffic with what they're deciding to build there on this entrance, like, because that's my big concern. That is kind of a blind, kind of, if you're trying to turn off of Main Street and go up and down Fifth. It's a little blind there, so.
Yeah, so the Engineering Department always reviews for obstructed traffic view, so I know Wally's got some additional information, and he can share that if he...
Yeah, so in addition to the encroachments, they're going through a site plan review process before the development review team. So when we're talking about the encroachments, mostly encroachments is less than a foot, less than a half a foot. And at the corner of the building, where it's on the southwest side of it, they're kind of replicating their iconic entryway. If you look at a lot of their buildings, like on the Myers Building, some other ones, they're duplicating that. That encroachment's going to be about a foot into the, into the right-of-way. We do take in consideration visibility, especially at that intersection where Main Street meets Fifth Street. They're well outside of the visibility triangle with regards to the openness and the design of that portico, so those are things we definitely take in consideration. Also, there's a stop sign on Main Street, the other side on Fifth Street is through traffic, so when the Engineering Department Traffic Division looks at that, there are no concerns with regards to these slight encroachments into the right-of-way, so.
That was my question.
All right. Any others? Yeah, Mr. W.
Very quickly, Mr. Wernemuth, just to follow up on Mr. Sprang's question, the public does not lose access to any of these streets because of these encroachments, correct?
Correct, yeah. So the encroachments will be slightly into the sidewalk area. So when I had a conversation with the Engineering Department, there will be any loss of street right-of-way access for the public. The sidewalks are fairly wide there, so especially when you're talking about a medical college campus, you know, we want to encourage that pedestrian walkway. And in addition to, you know, it's our main core of our downtown, our central business district, keeping that pedestrian walkway corridor, so there will be no impacts with regards to that. Actually, some of these encroachments are from the existing foundation footings. So if you think of a foundation, there's a flat footing and then a wall that sits on top of it. A lot of them are just the slight encroachment of that foundation that's encroaching underneath the sidewalk. So most of the physical encroachments that you'll see above ground will just be that slight of that portico building on the corner, and then there's a couple, there's another little bump out that comes out on the south side for some stairs, so.
I mean, the word encroachment is kind of a nasty word, but it's, it's, but it's all been looked at, and it's going to be very minor. I don't know if people are even going to notice it, but legally, there is a difference than, and you're bringing that up right now. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Wethel.
As I read this, I will say, I thought the word encroachment did feel a little negative. However, in this situation, I walk that sidewalk pretty often, especially in the mornings, and it's a very wide sidewalk. And I got the sense by looking at what was provided to us in materials that it really is a very small amount of encroachment, to the point that I'll probably walk and not really notice it if I wasn't looking for it.
Exactly.
So, yeah, thank you for the team's work on it. Couldn't be more excited to get it going.
Yeah. Thank you. Any others? All right, well, thank you, Wally. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprang.
Aye.
And that motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to our work session on the Unified Development Code update. I will turn it over to Planning Services Director, Wally Wernemuth.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Wally Wernemuth, Planning Services Director. We're actually excited. I'm excited. I'm a zoning guy, right? So we got the Unified Development Code update. This is something we've kind of been working on for a few years. The last time it was updated was in 2009, and we've had a lot of public input with regards to this technical report that will be presented by Arista Strungies of Camero's, who's the consultant that we've hired to help assist the city. We have submitted a survey that went out to, and we got responses from about 250 residents and community members. And then we did a technical group survey, which is more directed towards engineers, architects, surveyors, realtors, business individuals that are directly, directly work with the Unified Development Code every day. Most time, a normal citizen doesn't realize that it exists until it impacts their lives. So we wanted to make sure we had a discretion between those two types of groups and documents. And then included in that survey, you'll see we actually disaggregated the data, too, in addition to see, you know, how the engineers feel about it versus the realtors. So you can see there's some discrepancies when you look at, if you were to look at the data altogether, it's like, oh, it's, it's all even, but if you look at it, one side's like very favorable, the other one's not as favorable, which may not be used as more as the other group. So just wanted to disaggregate that information for you, to have that out there. But in addition to those two surveys, the consultant met directly with several key stakeholders, a lot of developers, engineering groups, and other individuals in our community, one-on-one through phone interviews. And then we also had an actual public meeting where we invited the engineers, architects, and surveyors to come in and sit down with us. So, and then we also had online opportunities for people to provide comments. And then last night, we actually had a public meeting, which Arista presented on the technical review report to the public. That meeting was publicized through media releases. It's on our Unified Development Code Project UP, UDC Update website, where we have all the reports, surveys, information. And then also, the Telegraph Herald has actually provided probably three articles now with regards to that information. And then we had some community members do some email blasts to their, to their groups to get the word out. So at that meeting, we heard several comments. We'll talk about those a little bit later, after Arista goes through some of the presentation as we talk about it at the end of that. So without ado, I'll introduce you to Arista.
Okay. Thank you. Wally, good evening, everybody. It's great to be here. As Wally said, this is the presentation from last night, so anybody who's watching, it's going to be a little bit of deja vu, but very happy to be here to present some of these initial findings of our technical review report of the UDC. So as we start to tackle a Unified Development Code update, kind of what are our objectives? What are we looking at from a zoning perspective? Well, some of it is to look at your adopted policies and plans, like Imagine Dubuque, and look at what zoning and development policies are located within there that we can help implement through the UDC. We want to do things that make this code much easier to use, user-friendly, predictable, consistent in its application, looking at ways to create new opportunities for diverse housing options and bringing those forward, integrating sustainability and resiliency into new development through these regulations, bringing in design standards into the districts as part of the code to ensure high-quality development, reducing dependence on special approvals, as well as making that approval process more transparent, so that as people are submitting an application, they know what to do, they know what the process will be. If they're interested in something their neighbor's doing or a development in the city, they'll be able to follow that process. So that's really where we want to get to with that. So what is a technical review report? I think Wally highlighted some of the stuff that goes into this already, but it really is me sitting down with the book and doing a really in-depth review of the current regulations, so really analyzing what is actually written down within the current Unified Development Code. We did a whole series of stakeholder interviews. They helped inform us of kind of where to look, where stuff may be a little bit more difficult to really kind of flag that, as well as the survey results. And just to say, I've been doing this for over 25 years. You had one of the highest response rates on an online survey at this point in the process I have ever seen, and I was shocked, and that's great. So just to tell you, everybody in the city should be proud. You really came out and responded. And then finally, we did a lot of discussions with staff on this code, just to find out what happens on a day-to-day basis, working with it, where we should, again, kind of be looking for things that may not be working as well as they should. So as you look at the report, it's important to remember, this is a proposal. It's setting forth certain approaches and ideas that we would like to pursue in the draft, and it's really there to elicit comment from everybody, from all of you around the dais, to the public who came to the meeting, to folks who may watch this later and want to come in and comment. What we're doing there is really kind of outlining some of the current issues we found, making sure that we're looking at these against things like best practices within the field, looking at common special approvals that maybe don't need to be special approvals each time, and then presenting concepts and approaches that will set the stage for drafting. And again, this is all to gather feedback. That's what this report is, is really nothing in here is set in stone. To that end, this report is not going to be revised, so kind of what's out there is what's out there. It's really meant for us to kind of gather comments, digest them, and then proceed forward in the drafting process. So what did we find? Well, some of these, like this, this is one of the best practices, things that I mentioned, is good organization of a code, something that's easy for folks to follow, as well as for you to use and amend as the future goes on, in a very logical, clear way. Some of the things we saw is integrating proper graphics and illustrations throughout the code, as part of the code, so officially, making sure everything's defined to reduce interpretation, make sure that everything is clear, folks understand what they're reading, they can look up what the word means and really kind of understand that, consistent measurement methodologies across the board, so we're measuring lot width the same way all the way across the city, as just an example. Not saying your lot width is bad, don't know, can't remember specifically, making sure there's a consistent voice, so we're kind of speaking the same language, using the same terms from beginning to end, because as codes get amendment, different folks make amendments, lawyers, engineers, planners, and we all talk a little bit different, so we want to make sure it's all the same. And then finally, compartmentalization, which is an organization technique of kind of putting things in their logical places. A lot of this to you will probably look familiar. I don't think it's too far off what's in the current code, the way the districts are organized, but certain things like parking and landscape belong in their own section, not kind of buried within the site plan stuff. There should be regulations that apply to the types of development you're doing. So you see here, introduce the ordinance, chapters four through 10, describe the different districts, we talk about the uses, then we start to look at other standards on the site, everything from accessory structures to parking to landscape and signs, and then finally, closing out with administration. So one of the first things we noticed as well is really trying to organize the uses so that it's much more clearly understood and potential for inconsistency or error is eliminated. And one of the ways to do this is by creating a global use matrix. You can look at the matrix here. This is not you. I've not made you a use table. Super curious, it's Hot Springs, Arkansas. That's their use table that got adopted, but it just really shows you that when you organize uses this way, rather than listing them out in the dis- each individual district, you can either say, I live in this district, I have a piece of property in the C1, what uses can I use? Or I want to open an arts and fitness studio, is what districts can I do that in? So that's really the benefit of this table. It's very intuitive, easy to get in, depending, no matter the way that you need to use it. With all the uses here, you eliminate inconsistencies. This is the only place you're making changes to uses and use permissions, so adding and modifying this becomes much simpler. It would list out all the principal accessory and temporary uses that we would allow in the districts, and most importantly, every one of these would have a definition associated with it, so that makes it really easy to understand what each of these uses mean, and when you're trying to do something, you can look through those definitions and find them. We know the current code does have some standards associated with certain uses, but as we do this evaluation, very often we find some additional standards are needed for uses, whether they're permitted or they're special, doesn't matter, they have some impacts that need mitigating, and so we'll be adding to those as we do a kind of deeper dive and create this, this use matrix. Also, kind of to that end, making sure that we're addressing all the different types of uses that there are. If you took a look at the report, we wanted to address some emerging principal uses. One of these was the corner store. You'll see it called the neighborhood commercial establishment in the document, but it's really defined a way to take existing corner stores within residential neighborhoods that have been there forever, especially with the city as old as Dubuque, and that serve a benefit to the neighbors that are there, but you really don't want to switch it to a commercial district. There's a way to memorialize those as they are and make sure that they stay low impact. So this is really something that we're suggesting to put into place for existing corner stores, which sometimes we know are not on the corner. Also, making sure that we've got kind of the interesting maker-creator spaces. There's a vibrancy here to Dubuque. We want to make sure that everything is, is being allowed in the proper places to help foster that, so things like artisan industrial, specialty food service, which is fancy name for something like a coffee roaster, food truck parks, commercial kitchens. I know this all focuses on food. I apologize. I know it is dinner time. Not mean to do that. Addressing temporary uses as well, you know, the variety of things, food trucks, the Iowa quirk of firework stands that you've got in the state legislation, temporary outdoor events, and things that happen when you're building something, real estate and construction. And then finally, just examples of accessory uses, things like drive-throughs, home occupations. We know a very recent state law came into effect regarding accessory dwelling units. From RN, that would just be in alignment with what the state requires, so that would be added in and make sure that we're just completely in line with what the state has said we need to do. So the districts, kind of the heart of the beast, if it were. So the first set is the residential districts, and we did some analysis. If you look at the code itself, there's a whole series of maps that look at it. We did a GIS analysis based on lot size, which is kind of one of the key things that determines development patterns, to see really what was going on. As we looked at the R1 district, which is kind of the majority of your residential districts, it really is kind of in line with the standards that you've got in place, the development patterns reflected in the lot areas that are present out there, so really not recommending any changes to that. But when we looked at the R2, we saw that if we reduced the lot size to 5,000 square feet, because two-family is 6,000, single-family is 5,000, if everybody just jumped on board the 5,000 square feet, you have significant opportunity for two-family, which is the intent of the district, and it really increases conformance within that district as well. Looking at the R2A, again, pretty much what we saw is what, what you want it to be is really what we're seeing on the ground in terms of that development pattern, so recommended maintaining that. And then you had the R3 and the R4 districts, which really allow the full gamut of dwelling types, from single-family to multifamily, very little distinction between the two of them. So the recommendation here is really to bring them together into one district that addresses what both of them are trying to do. With a small, moderate height increase from 40 to 50 feet, you can get a district that really does have that blend of different housing types in place. And then looking at unit count to be determined by the lot area per dwelling, rather than a fixed limit, so essentially saying, for example, not recommending this, just saying, if it's 1,000 square feet per townhouse, that would determine the number of units on the lot. And then finally, a recommendation for a new district, the R5. This would be one for higher-density townhouse and multifamily only, so it's really kind of your higher-density residential. We would need to look at where that would go, but a lot of times when we create districts for a code update, we're giving you backpocket districts, too. So these are things that may be more appropriate into the future, but you have them ready to go, and you don't have to rely on something like PUD, or, hey, staff, make me a district, which can be, you know, a difficult ask at times. So making sure we have that. I think some PUDs have been doing this type of development, so that's really one of the things that we also kind of looked at and said, hey, we should maybe make a district for this to make it far more predictable. So this is really just a quick summary of everything I just kind of went through. We propose to change the name to RN, Residential Neighborhood, just to make that distinction between what you currently have and what the new code would have. So you can see here, the proposed district, the current district it's based on, and the dwelling types that are allowed. So, you know, the RN1 is the single-family, RN2 is single-family up through townhouse, and our two-family and townhouse, two units. The R2A becomes RN3. RN4 is the combination of R3 and R4, again, that full gamut of dwelling types. And then finally, the new RN5 district for higher-density townhouse and multifamily. So some of the other key recommendations within the report regarding the residential districts, clarifying what impervious surface is, you know, this is a key control for stormwater control. You currently have it kind of buried in the landscape section of 20% green space, which can be confusing to folks. If you say 80% impervious surface max, I understand that, that's what I'm covering on the lot. So we're not proposing to change anything, just to flip the way we're referencing it, just to make it much more clear, and then we can actually spell out exactly what counts towards impervious, so it's a kind of an additional benefit there in terms of development and interpretation. Propose some front-set-back averaging for single-family and two-family areas. Really, that's just to kind of keep the pattern of development along the block, the character in these residential neighborhoods, so that you're not just assigning an arbitrary number, you're actually working with the flow of the block within residential neighborhoods. We've also proposed, you know, Dubuque's an old city with some really big houses, it may be appropriate for some of them, just economically, to be able to split into more than one unit. We know this can be controversial, and we know because you have educational facilities here, it may not be appropriate everywhere, but the options to create this with a set of standards that, you know, someone would have to meet in order to even begin this process, is something we think could be beneficial. And then finally, cottage court development. I don't know that if you've ever gotten one, but you do have a cottage court subdivision process, but this would take it and make it a much simpler development form that could slot into residential neighborhoods. You see that cartoon there, that kind of shows what we mean by a cottage court. It allows for basically, you know, a series of dwelling types to be located around a central green space, with very specific standards of how that's designed, typically provides opportunities for even building in, and I'm not saying tiny homes, I'm saying a smaller-than-average residential home, but not a tiny home. I am not bringing that up. But really, that's some of the benefits of having this type of development type located within the residential. For your commercial districts, we really just looked at it and tried to establish, how can we make a logical set of commercial districts that increase in scale and function as we kind of move from the very local to things that are more impactful? So what you see here is, again, kind of looking at a proposal for some new districts that incorporate the current districts that you have. So as we look at the CN, the neighborhood commercial as proposed, this is really looking at your office commercial and your C1 neighborhood commercial areas. This is small-scale commercial, very compatible when adjacent to residential neighborhoods. The CMU, mixed-use district, would be combining the C2 and the C2A, creating one really true mixed-use district with standards that reflect that. The CG, general commercial, is really just a refocusing of the C3, general commercial, auto-oriented commercial areas. You've got those, you got to make sure you've got a district that addresses those. The only one whose name didn't change, the CS, is the CS, which is your commercial service and wholesale, which is a heavy commercial district that does, cities see a lot of utility in having these, and again, kind of orienting the sighting and the dimensions to that type of commercial. And then finally, the CBD, the Central Business District. You've currently got the C4, and you've got the C5 that addressed this area, the C5 being the core, not the code, I can see a typo, and that's embarrassing, but the core of the district, really the heart, Main Street, is really what we want to look at. So as we saw, C4 stretches pretty far, and it may not be the same character throughout all of the C4. So the intent here was really to do an outer core that's kind of closer to Main Street, and then an edge that goes around it, and so we can kind of feather out the downtown and really address the character that, that's present there. Some additional changes to the commercial. You have the OR district. We've proposed to revise that as the residential professional. That district speaks specifically to adaptive reuse and its purpose statement, kind of looking at taking primarily things like older homes and converting them into offices, so things like a lawyer's office or an architect's office and those types of things. We think with a revision and some tweaking of the standards, we could really create the exact type of district that you're looking to do there. The OS district is a strictly office district that we are proposing to eliminate. I think we're all kind of aware, after the pandemic, office isn't really that much in demand, and office-only districts can become very desolate very quickly. If they're only allowing for office uses, we think absorbing it into the others really makes sense, allows for that vibrancy of uses, even if it's just all different commercial uses. And then finally, the CR district, there's not a lot of area zoneness. This is kind of commercial recreation. We think it can fit into the other commercial areas. In terms of things we thought to add to the commercial district regulations, some of this is a build-to zone for some of these districts, so things like, as I spoke of, the neighborhood, the mixed-use, the central business district. Rather than just saying no setback, let's start to make sure buildings come closer to the street with build-to zones, you know, so that essentially you're creating that street wall. And then finally, including design standards throughout the commercial districts, so that we're really getting that high-quality design and new development as it moves forward. The industrial districts that you currently have, fairly typical, recommend maintaining them as the light and the heavy, and just taking the MHI, Modified Heavy Industrial, bringing it into the heavy industrial district, and then the potential to create a new IMU, industrial mixed-use district. And this is, again, kind of an adaptive reuse district, where you see kind of areas of older industrial buildings that are, you know, not really appropriate for industrial uses anymore, but they start to become things like your microbrewery, or your indoor soccer, or your doggy daycare, but they get this kind of, they're usually called the cool areas of town, and they start to mix all these uses with some still existing industrial. But industrial districts should be for industrial, so that's the purpose of the industrial mixed-use, to address those areas and then continue to protect areas of existing industrial development. You also have some special-purpose districts, two of which are perfectly appropriate, the agricultural district and the ID institutional district, which we recommend just renaming INST, just a little more intuitive. Okay, I don't know if you guys ever caught this, you have a district called POS. It's for parks. I don't know if that's, just take a second to think of the POS part of that. I'm not going to say it out loud, because I know that's bad. We think just because very little is zoned, that district, and since all the districts would allow for parks and natural areas, that it's really not necessary and can be absorbed into all the other districts. And then in terms of PUD, we're going to talk about that in a minute. We're kind of recommending an alternate approach to, to deal with PUD a little bit better. In terms of overlays, you have a number of them, recommended to maintain them. They're very specific, they're very unique to Dubuque, so things like the rural residential and the restricted height overlays would remain. The flood hazard overlay, very technical, that would be maintained but moved into its own article, just because it's, it's pretty intense, it's very long, and it just has You did have an SOD sign overlay, build controls and build those controls into the sign article rather than through an overlay. And then, as I kind of already mentioned, the OTN, the Old Town Overlay, is a whole series of design standards related to commercial development. We think those can be built into all of the commercial districts, and an overlay should be controlling an elevated level of design that really what we could do is just take that and spread that to all the commercial districts based on their scale, so we can tailor things out. So really, there wouldn't be a need for that district anymore, because the code itself would just absorb those design standards, those form standards, and really make sure all commercial development is achieving that higher level. So we've kind of talked about the principal uses on the site and how you build the principal building. So these are all kind of the other standards that would come into play. So some of this, kind of, we were all, kind of talked about it in the first item you had on your agenda, making sure the site triangle is clear, so when you're at a corner, everybody can see everybody and nobody gets hit. Standards for fences, mechanical equipment, things like refuse containers, which are really dumpsters, making sure they're screened, their locations are established. It's really kind of general standards for all of that. We've proposed to include some very basic exterior lighting controls. This would really, on private property, so it's not the street, these exterior lighting controls would be kind of to help minimize light trespass, light glare, very simple standards that can be easily understood and enforced. We have not proposed to go kind of very deep into that, but really just to have something in place. And then finally, accessory structures. You've got them kind of scattered in two places. One has general standards, one is listed within the districts. Some say accessory structures that are common to this district, which is kind of a giant loophole. As I said last night, you can kind of drive a truck through it. So essentially, we want to kind of get this comprehensive, get it kind of tightened up, and make sure we're addressing all the different types of accessory structures that are out there. And I dreaded this from the first item on your agenda, the word encroachments. It's not scary, it's a term of art, I swear, I swear. So also, what we wanted to do is make sure we included, oh, I dread it, permitted encroachments into required setbacks. So this is on a private site, essentially what's this thing, you can kind of see in this example here, again, not for Dubuque, anybody's curious, Palos Park, Illinois, really just looking at certain elements of a building, things like a balcony, or an eve, or an attached deck, or a bay window, and allowing for them to encroach a little bit into the setback that's required by the district. So a little bit in the front, a little bit into the side, a little bit into the rear. In some cases, it's not allowed in all the different setbacks, in a number of them, there's limits on how far they can go. But essentially, it extends the building envelope a little bit more and allows for architectural interest on the building. So really, if I had to shove everything into my building envelope, I might not do a nice eve or a bay window. This gives you the flexibility to encourage that. So parking. So as we looked at that, we do want to update the parking standards, make sure the design of parking lots and parking structures, as I've learned here, parking ramps, make sure they're all comprehensively kind of looked at and make sure that we've got everything we need, driveway controls, permissions for EV spaces, the design of loading areas, and then kind of looking at the amount of parking nets required. So one of these things is to update the parking ratios, which is the amount of parking required per use, and make sure that they're reasonable and kind of effective. But then also to incorporate some flexibilities. So currently, your downtown, as well as certain historic districts, are exempt from parking entirely. You may have additional districts you want to add to that. You may want to exempt existing structures, again, kind of an adaptive reuse technique, saying if this building's been here for 50 years, it's never had parking on the site, it doesn't have room for parking, we can exempt it from that until that building's torn down. So really, just giving, getting them out of the variance game, encouraging the reuse of those buildings. Exempting initial square footage for commercial in areas that have, say, smaller commercial uses. Sometimes you see this as, we discount the first 2,500 square feet, counting towards your parking requirement, so that it gets reduced to something that's a little bit more reasonable for smaller businesses, and then potentially counting odd-street spaces. One of the things we heard also was to include parking maximums, to make sure that we're not over paving things and just, you know, it's usually building the parking lot for the day before Christmas. Want to make sure that that's kind of not happening, a lot of environmental impacts from that. Requiring more bike parking, so really, rather than just saying if your parking lot has a certain number of spaces, you need bike parking, kind of tying that into the districts and the uses. And then just some very basic rules on the storage of commercial and recreational vehicles. But if you read the report, you also saw that we added some additional things to consider. One thing to consider is, how do we feel about no parking minimums at all? This is something that other cities, even big and small, have started to take into account. And it really is something that we've seen, just in our experience, that it really, people are still building parking, they're just not building a lot of parking. So why would you take this such an approach? So there are areas that have developed without any off-street parking, they just, it doesn't exist. So with no minimums, it's easier to reuse and redevelop those sites. When you require parking, it can negatively impact neighborhood character, because as you're designing the site, you're really sacrificing everything to accommodate the parking, rather than go through the variance process, rather than looking at the context of the building and how that would fit in. Reduces variances, probably the most obvious one, which add cost and time. And then again, a lot of paving, stormwater runoff, heat island effect, if you're doing a lot of that, that's really one of the other kind of negative impacts of a lot of parking. If you provide a parking, you would still have a parking chapter, tell you how to design it, what landscape would be required, but just would not require a parking minimum. We heard support for this during this process. I don't know how all of you feel, but you know, it's really something to consider that we would love to hear comments on, and we don't need everybody to make a decision right now. But really, the idea is really to consider something like this. In our experience, again, parking still gets built when it's needed. When the bank says you need to build parking or you're not getting a loan, you're going to build parking. I mean, that's just kind of how it works. So kind of staying on the, kind of related to parking, we want to make sure that landscape is also comprehensive. One of the key things about landscape is having provisions for parking lot interior and perimeter for screening, again, heat islands, stormwater runoff effects. Your current landscape calculations are really kind of a little bit confusing, number of tree and shrubs per square footage of permeable area, which can lead to kind of prioritizing numerical compliance over kind of a more thoughtful, purposeful design. We would like to reorganize this around the types of areas that would require landscape. So things like parking areas, buffer yards, maybe larger developments may need some additional kind of onsite landscaping. And really, when you take the kind of opposite approach of just saying, okay, we want this here, and this is the number of trees, even though there's some flexibility, it's more consistent, and it achieves the effects that you want it to achieve. We'll also be looking at signs. You know, obviously, it's very clear that we have to be content neutral. This is a decision that came down through the Supreme Court many years ago. The only thing we can still distinguish is on-premise versus off-premise, so that's really just your standard sign versus the billboard. So we can still keep those two separate. They've upheld that to date, that you can still regulate separately. So we want to reorganize the sign regulations. So we see here kind of the way that we've laid it out, the purpose, the general sign standards, things like illumination, construction, prohibited signs, exempt signs that don't require a permit, signs that do require a permit, and then finally, the billboard provisions. One of the new things we wanted everybody to consider is a classic sign provision, which would be a process where an existing sign over a certain age, typically 50 years old, real character giving, something you really like, but that business may close or may not be there anymore, this provision would allow you to keep that sign and maintain it and restore it, kind of treating it more as a character-giving art piece rather than just a sign for a business. So we would just need to designate whichever signs we would like as a classic sign. So similar to what you do now, we want to continue to regulate signs by the type and then by the district. This allows us to match the scale and types of signs to the form and visual character of the district. I think what's important here is that, you know, you would see some signs are allowed in all the districts, but they're different sizes, or some signs are only allowed in certain other districts, but not, in some districts, but not in others. Just, again, matching the form that we're trying to achieve within the commercial districts. You see here, I'm not going to read them all, I know you probably were scared I was, but just some examples of signs that would require a permit, pretty kind of, you know, they're pretty obvious, a drive-through sign, a freestanding sign, and then signs exempt from permit, that basically would have standards around them that they need to comply with, so you can enforce if somebody's being, abusing these provisions, but would not require an official sign permit. And you can see many of these are fairly, you know, fairly common, parking lot circulation point, enter exit, drive-through this way, that's really, for that sign, that's an example. So finally, administration. We just want to really clarify the administrative processes. A lot of times, this just comes down through what's been happening in the state. So, you know, our leeway to kind of change things around is a little limited, but we want to clarify the different processes. So you see here, it's kind of who does what, how do I do it, and what happens when I'm doing it, which is items one through three, and then plus subdivision. I've not been able to come up with a clever way to add it to that. But really, the idea here is, let's make it clear what's happening within the administration, administrative processes. You can see here the various types of applications and permits that we wanted to make sure were included, everything from amendments and conditional uses down to PUD and subdivision. So a couple of things that we did want to make sure that we addressed in here, to create a concept of a special exception. So this would be a way to allow for more administrative flexibility in the code for very minor things that happen. So the first is, you currently have this, it's the limited setback waiver for single-family and two-family, 33.3% or less of the required setback. That's current, that's, you're already allowing for something like this, which is great. We think as we look at it, we can start to look at other standards within the code and say, maybe it's a 10% or less modification that can go through this separate process for a special exception. You know, we can, that's just a very general threshold, we would continue to refine that, but really, it just, you know, kind of takes things off the board's agendas and just really allows you to kind of have a little more flexibility on sites. You're hilly, I'm from Chicago, we are very flat, you're very hilly, which means there's all kinds of little quirks on every one of your lots, which is great, trust me, by the time I get to Galena, I'm very relieved. When you go through Winnebago County driving here, oh, boy, that's just flat. So zoning interpretation, just adding a formal interpretation of the text, really what we want here, if somebody's coming in pursuit of a, some form of development, to say, yes, this specific use falls under this category, and to issue that formally, thereby keeping a record here at the city, which allows you to then just be consistent in how that would be interpreted. With adding in the new temporary uses, or additional temporary uses, just to update that permit, make sure everything's in line. And then clarify the site plan review process, you know, it's kind of got everything in the kitchen sink in site plan review now, with the landscape and the parking, really just let's pare this down to a process and clarify when it's required, and also create criteria for potential denial of a site plan as well. Also, a couple of other things in administration. So you have the requirement for a traffic study. It's not explicitly stated, but it may come up in site plan or it may come up in subdivision. So we want to maybe establish some criteria for when this would be required, rather than just kind of having it float within the application that a traffic study may be required. In terms of subdivision, the majority of your subdivision process looks pretty clean, but just a couple of things we wanted to kind of add into it or clarify within it. Codifying the city policy governing payment responsibilities, timing and procedures for off-site improvements. As a condition of development approval, let's just get that, the policy into the document itself. You have the sustainable subdivision, let's make sure we've got everything we want in there, clarify the points, make sure it's working. And then currently, looking at your three specific types of subdivision. You have a conservation subdivision design, good thing, we think we can just simplify and clarify. There's another typo, and, and, clarify. In terms of solar, just integrate that within your sustainable subdivision points, so it doesn't live kind of as its own subdivision. And then, as I mentioned way back when, in terms of cottage, to replace that with the cottage court development option within the residential district. So it's not, no longer really a subdivision process. So then finally, PUD. We're starting to see some reliance on PUD to get development done, it's kind of why we talked about that RN5 district. And that can create a kind of unpredictable development environment. I'm not saying to get rid of PUD, I think PUD is a great tool when it's used for its purposes of unique and innovative developments, when it's really needed to get something that you really couldn't have encountered for within the code to get that done. I think we need to kind of bring it back to its roots. It goes beyond its original intent, you start to see it fill in gaps in zoning, where, you know, the code doesn't talk about it, so let's just do it through PUD, which then becomes scary, because it can then just become, everything becomes PUD, because there are some places I've worked where it's terrifying, basically, everything is a PUD. PUDs, the issues with them, with their overuse, they're time-consuming and they're costly. Again, the person filing the PUD has to go through that process, it is, you know, time and cost heavy for them, but for people following this process, and, you know, kind of wanting to see, that's their time, too, that's being consumed during this process that's being negotiated out. There can be frustration and inefficiency, it's all a negotiation, think nobody's kind of getting what they want, that can happen. And then finally, the biggest issue there is, that we see, is that each PUD becomes essentially its own tiny little zoning ordinance. So when somebody's going out to enforce and they think they know the rules, they get to something, and it's like, no, my rule's different, because I'm a PUD. So enforcement can become easier if everybody's living under the same rules, PUDs start to throw a wrench into that. So that's one of the kind of key things about those. So as we kind of look at this, and kind of, I've mentioned some of this already, as we change the districts, as we change the uses, and we become more responsive, and even integrating things like the conditions you've been placing on frequent PUDs or special approvals into the code, you can really reduce that reliance. As part of this as well, we wanted everyone to consider a slightly alternate approach to PUDs. You currently make it a district, which is a rezoning, so it becomes its own PUD district. The alternate approach, and it would still go through the same approval process, but it would end up being an approval rather than being a district, would be to kind of treat it as something that lays on top of an existing district. So, for example, if I'm in the C3, made-up district, I'm in the C3, I want to do a PUD, I need something with height and something with setback and add in a use, I get my approval through the same process you do now, it would come to you for final approval, as an approval for that, for that piece of, that piece of property with the PUD and the changes. If I don't act on it after X amount of time, typically two years, the approval is null and void, and that's it. It goes away and the lot becomes the C3, rather than sitting as a PUD that's been rezoned. So it gives you an expiration, basically encourages folks to not just make a PUD because they can, it's like, I have to act. There's opportunities to extend in extenuating circumstances, obviously, you know, we would build that in, but it really provides a little bit more predictability, and it really says, you know, if you're going to do it, you're going to, you're going to build this thing. A couple of other things in the PUD process, we saw that you have eliminating the minimum acreage for a PUD, in particular, in commercial areas, very small ones could be very handy. We know maybe in single-family, might be a little bit dicey, maybe we do need to maintain some minimum area there, but really, eliminate that for most. Eliminate the required types of plan development. You have this whole list of things that have to be PUD, which you really shouldn't be making anybody have to be a PUD. We think that's, you know, kind of, again, time, cost, your time as well. As part of that, too, we've made the recommendation that, you know, multiple buildings on a site would not need a PUD. There would be standards in the code that would allow you to build in commercial areas, not single-family, but in commercial areas, to build multiple buildings in just kind of a logical fashion. And then finally, negotiation. It is a negotiation between you, the city, and the person proposing the PUD, and that perhaps required benefits and amenities coming back to the city should be a key part of this process. Now, in many times, you know, you can think of this, it could be a plaza, a park, preservation of natural resources, but say you needed things like senior housing, the PUD itself could be the public benefit. So it's not like necessarily you build a plaza and you need it. It's interpreted each time, and you would get the ability to look at it and determine if that criteria was met. And then finally, we've made it to the end, non-conformities. So a lot of what you heard me say was try to make sure that we're bringing things into conformance, I talked about that with the single-family lot sizes, with the different uses, but unfortunately, you're going to have non-conformities. We can't, we can't solve them all. So we want to just make sure the rules are very clear on each of the types of non-conformities that can occur within the city. So the first would be a non-conforming use, when such use has been discontinued or abandoned, you know, when does that use lose its privilege to be able to continue, just making sure those timelines are clear. And then perhaps including an exception for any residential uses in residential districts that would be considered a non-conforming use. We can create a provision that deems them conforming so long as they're, you know, still standing and they haven't been demolished by the owner. So that way, you've got that housing that's always been in the mix, but we're not putting it into non-conforming status. And again, for existing legal uses, residential uses in the residential districts. Non-conforming structures, just making sure what you can do structurally to a non-conforming building, again, related to that residential, perhaps allowing for replacement in kind in the case of an accident, flexibilities for things like maybe existing detached garages. And then finally, non-conforming site characteristics, kind of the last part of a site. Things like landscape, lighting, parking lot design, really shouldn't be subject to the non-conforming structure provisions, it can be treated as its own. And the benefit to that is, is you're not penalizing a building that actually does conform with everything the district asks, you're just dealing with that one element. You're just dealing with that one element. And then again, kind of the common rules for non-conforming lots and non-conforming sites. A potential new permission that we wanted to add, you know, you've got kind of all of these worked in already with that 33.3% waiver for single-family and two-family. This would kind of build off of that. This would allow, that we've proposed, single-family and two-family where the wall of the house is too far into the side yard or too far into the rear yard, and they want to build a second story on it. This would allow them to build that second story in line with the wall as it is without having to get a variance. Very important. Every other element of the district needs to be met, the things like height and impervious surface, all of these different things, but really it's a way to take existing housing stock and give it a little bit of flexibility in order to have it kind of recycle and continue to be used. You know, it's sustainable because the greenest house is the one that's already built. So it's really just a way to allow some of the stuff to become just a little bit more useful and extend its useful life. And again, many of these homes may be character-giving, and this would give them the opportunity to continue to do that. And so with that, yeah, that's it. That's all we found. But we really appreciate the ability to come here this evening and present this. And like I said, just to be clear, these are our proposals, recommendations. Nothing is set in stone. Be really happy to hear any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Arista. That's not all you found. I saw the surveys. I mean, that's a lot of, in fact, I'm not even done reading all the surveys. There's so much information there. To open with for a question, then I'll open it up to everybody. What's next here? I mean, so just can we lay out the process of what is going to happen going forward? We've got this work session, we've had public listening opportunities, we've had lots of survey opportunities. Walk us through the timetable if you would, Wally.
Yeah, so according to our contract, right, Arista? The next step is actually taking all this information that's been received and start drafting an ordinance. So creating some of that information will be a city staff review. So taking these concepts, putting them in an ordinance form, which the city staff will be reviewing, and then having public open houses. So it'll be an open housing format where large-scale room, certain sections placed up on posters around the areas, have the conversation to vent it to the public and have that public input. Are we really interested in eliminating parking minimums? Are we really interested in looking into doing certain things and demonstrating that have that information to be able to take through? So that public open house, and then there'll be another public open house with a second draft and presentations of the zoning advisory commission, city council. Is that correct?
Timeline-wise?
So timeline, our contract goes to the end of March. So the next step for the public open houses and drafting will be within the next three months, three or four months, I would say.
Yeah, we're going to have to push that timeline.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, but the contract we have goes through March, you said. So the rest of this year and into the spring, we're hoping to complete the drafting process.
It's all kind of internal. It's between me and Wally and his team.
Yep. So the big thing about it is that we don't want to rush this, right? We want to make sure the public, the developers, the people that are impacted have an opportunity to review and comment on it. So the Unified Development Code's been around since 2009. It's okay if it stays for an extra six months, right? So we just need the information to make sure that it's fully vented, the public has their opportunity to speak, they understand the concepts, so we fully understand what's being brought before. The zoning advisory commission would have to do amendments to the code, and then you guys would have to do the formal adoption. So there'll be public input opportunities before we take it through an entire formal adoption process, so.
When you said draft an ordinance, you mean the code in that? The ordinance is the Unified Development Code? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, so we know what we're talking about.
Yep. So can I just add one other thing?
Please.
So when we say Unified Development Code, the Unified Development Code is made up of our zoning ordinance, our subdivision ordinance, and our historic preservation ordinance. So it's actually composed of those three different documents that are all combined together. That's why we call it Unified Development Code. So we didn't mention historic preservation in the presentation, but there will be some minor modifications to the historic preservation ordinance of the code. That's really more staff cleaning up some more of the processes, streamlining some of the flow with regards to that, and then the subdivision and the zoning we've already kind of talked about, so.
All right, so sorry, one more quick follow-up then, and then I'll promise I'll open it up. So really, I mean, just to make it really clear, the comments we provide tonight or the questions we ask, this is really the input of seven people, really, of many more people who are going to provide more input on this through the, because we're not making any decisions tonight, obviously. We're in a work session. But we will decide on the final version. This council will vote on the final version of this once it's all gone through the process of tonight's discussion and then further drafting and further public discussion. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Now I shut up. Mr. Scranton?
Wally and, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Arista.
Arista, thank you, Arista. Urban farms, is that, where does that fall under our code? Or do we not really have a code for urban farms? Guessing we didn't run into it at all.
So urban farms is a great conversation, discussion. So we have community gardens and the various aspects for that. If you think of cabivium, they fall underneath our greenhouse requirements. We have the urban farmstead that's up on Burlington Street and Davenport Street. That's currently zoned ag. That is an evolving use that's becoming more and more popular as we talk about that, the urban farmstead. So that would be something definitely we would take in consideration. That's actually a good suggestion that you brought that up specifically. We did recently modify our ordinance within the past six months to expand commercial greenhouses to more commercial zones. That's where you see some of that urban farmstead using Central Avenue. There's some interior microgreens that are growing and some, the growing use of that as we see in our community, in addition to the expansion of cabivium, who's using kind of that specialty retail food services where we're talking about roasters, where they're using it to take the food and grow and make casseroles and take advantage of that. We have had situations where we have some zones where they want to do a roaster currently would not be allowed because of the impact in the C1 district. How can we make that a little bit more flexible to encourage that or allow that while still taking concerns of the adjoining neighbors in the neighborhood, so.
Because basically what I'm getting at is all this is really good information, and I'm glad that we're wanting to clean up a lot of the confusion and the cluster of things. Businesses, particularly small businesses, have to evolve and change constantly, and if we're not giving them the flexibility to do that, I'm appreciative that we're coming up with more flexible options because I like a lot of what I'm hearing tonight, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farmer? So I have a couple of questions, and speaking of small business, one is that you brought up the emerging principles, and one of them was food truck parks. Can you share with me some of the feedback about food truck parks, or is this just something to further discuss?
This is something that basically we're seeing in a lot of cities. It's popping up, and so you want to get ahead of it. And so essentially, food truck park can be, I've learned now, one or more trucks, which is a specifically designated area for them to go. You kind of look at the way the site would be designed and all of that, and just because it really seems like food trucks are not going away. So we just want to make sure some of these emerging uses are things we want to get ahead of that may not be coming from, you know, a lot of folks don't know specifically uses they want. So we just want to get ahead of that.
Yeah, well, thank you, because I own two food trucks.
Oh, good, okay.
And, you know, we park it at the restaurant, obviously, and Wally knows that, but I'm just looking for the future as well. So I very much appreciate the fact that it is listed under emerging principles. My next question is about condominiums, and I know that you had talked about some of the different uses for the city, for apartments and things, but I didn't hear anything about condos.
Well, condominium is a type of ownership, and so zoning just specifically deals with the type of land use. So a multifamily building could be owner, rent, or condo, that, we don't deal with that.
So there's no ordinance that we would have to have a discussion here about for condo ownership?
You shouldn't within the UDC.
Within the UDC, okay.
I don't know if you do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, excuse me, that question gets brought up all the time, and just like Arista responded to that question, it's multifamily residential. So if we have a 50-unit building and it's just all rental, that's just a 50-unit multifamily residential structure. If that structure turns into a condominium where it's owner-occupied, it's a tax structure, ownership structure. From a zoning standpoint, it's still a multifamily residential. So it's how the funding and the background and how they want to purchase and lay that all, that's really not handled through zoning. That's handled more through, you know, the realtors, the lawyers, and the former ownership and the property owner, how they want to handle that, so.
Okay. So my next question has to do with your exterior lighting controls.
Sure.
And I know you probably have looked at different cities, and especially right now with all the hyper-scale data centers emerging, and a lot of that will have light nuisance, as we call it. But I would imagine there's just other buildings downtown and within residences that also have lights either for safety, for other purposes. What was the comment or what was the feedback about lights that you received, or what is the intention here?
Again, I don't think there's any specific comment. I would have to go back through my notes regarding that. It's again, one of those things that we've been building into ordinances over the past, I'd say, 10, 15 years to at least do the very basics of things for light pollution, light trespass, light glare, try to minimize fights between neighbors and help the birds is really what's been coming up. So, you know, a lot of these things, and just to say, a lot of the recommendations in this report are coming from, well, me, as the consultant, you know, working with my team at the office, just kind of of things we see that codes should have.
Sure.
But yeah, we're seeing a lot of, you know, you can go very extreme with lighting, or you can do some very basics that help you in those conflicts, and that's what we've been proposing.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned EV spaces for parking when you were looking at parking standards. Any more thoughts about where and when in Dubuque have you done site analysis on that in terms of opportunities?
I think what we would see is kind of the starting point is to be very clear that you would allow EV spacings in a parking lot and kind of some very basics around their design is usually pretty necessary. And sometimes it gets in signage. I don't know if you've seen them now, and now you have the ones that have basically like a small electric billboard attached. So there's all these kind of issues. So we want to start at least on the playing field of we're going to allow for them, and I think we just need to get more feedback in case you want to require them in larger parking lots. But there's kind of this whole big discussion around parking that we need to kind of have.
Okay. And then I also want to give you kudos for the adaptive reuse that you discussed, and I know that there are a lot of comments about the infill downtown and how some residents or some of the community members were mentioning that wouldn't it be really optimal to try to do more infill than to build new? So I appreciated that comment, and hopefully that will be part of our mojo to really focus on infill. And I very much appreciate the historic preservation section, and most importantly, that the greenest house is the one that is already built, and I very much appreciate that as well. What an amazing amount of research and survey work that you have done to really get the engagement of the community and all of the documents. Documentation is just incredible. I mean, there's like, you know, we'll keep us up at night reading, so thank you very much. But just a wonderful beginning, and I look forward to the next steps. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Swenson?
Thank you. Well, I really like this overall approach. I think it's much more intuitive and user-friendly. I especially like the use matrix table that's very visual. I like the clarifications, for example, the traffic study, when do you have to have it? Things that can answer questions for people right up front, really important. So I have two questions, and the first is, you mentioned best practices, and I'm just wondering, who are those best practices that you use for comparison to help develop our plan?
I keep getting this question in presentations I'm doing. It's kind of a very nebulous term, and I think I'm going to stop using it, actually. Because really what it is, it's just over the years as you do zoning projects and you develop techniques to tackle certain issues and certain problems that pop up, you kind of find the techniques that work best. Those become the best practices. Code organization is probably the best one. How do you organize it so that it's easy to read, so that it's easy to amend going into the future? And it's just kind of tried and true things that have been tested over time based on our experience, based on kind of talking to other folks specifically in the zoning field. So it's really, it's not like you can pull out a book and it says, these are the best practices. It's, you know, and everybody's got their own, some are just specifically Camaro's best practices and some are the larger field. I know my answer's not really specific, but that's really what it is, and I really am going to stop using the term because it's just our experience in working with codes and seeing how they play out over time. And we work with giant cities, and I'm working in a place with 3,000 people, so, you know, kind of addressing it that way.
I think that's a very helpful answer.
Okay, thank you. Oh, boy.
So my next question is very different. I'm wondering about the RN1, the residential district. I wondered if there was any talk about reducing the minimum size for perhaps looking towards building smaller, more affordable homes? Have there been any talk about something like that?
I did hear some, during the stakeholder interviews, did hear some, you know, calls for, you know, it should be smaller. I mean, people just, you know, make it smaller, and if they want to build bigger, they can build bigger. We're not stopping you. It's kind of then becomes a balance between existing neighborhoods where they're meeting that lot size in the R1. I mean, that's kind of the pattern for existing things that have been developed. I know subdivisions may be their own kind of thing. And then kind of if there's areas that come in, you know, kind of how does that disrupt? I'm happy to continue to look at it. I think there were people that were in support of kind of lowering it and making it smaller, but kind of wasn't to a person. There are a number of people who are just like, I like my neighborhood, can we keep the neighborhood as is, so.
So, well, I guess maybe Wally, you could address, like, I'm thinking more of like an infill sort of places where maybe a house never was before, but perhaps.
Yeah, so that is a topic about smaller lot development, more infill concentration. So currently, that's what we could call the RN3, which is the R2A residential zoning district. The R2A is 2,500 square foot minimum lot sizes. Typically, what's happening right now dictated by building coding, you have a five-foot side yard setback and lot sizes. So that R2A district allows that flexibility. The reason why people have been using the R2A is we have these crazy preambles for all of our zoning districts. And the preamble say like, if you're going to do an R2A, you need to be located in an older historic portion of the city, located as you're using the downtown and everything. So as we move forward with the zoning discussion, we're actually looking at eliminating those preambles, which causes some issues when you read at the character-defining districts of that. So I think sometimes people look at that and it's like, well, I can't apply for a zoning district where I want to develop a subdivision with a 40-foot wide lot and say 4,000 square foot lot area with different setbacks that may be associated with it. So that flexibility with the R2A district, which allows you to get all the way down to a three-foot side yard setback and a 10-foot front yard setback, which if we do build to and have flexibility, could be even less based on that, will encourage and allow those smaller lot developments to happen. However, due to some of those preambles, I think that's causing some confusion, if you have, and we talked about that.
Yeah, no, the preambles are terrible. I'm going to be quite frank with y'all. They're really bad. They're very long and, I've never seen anything like it, and legally, they could get you in a lot of trouble. They're not just describing the purpose of the district, they're just like forcing you to put it somewhere which may not actually even exist in the city. So that is key. I mean, that is the one thing. I mean, there was support, you know, just taking everything down to a lower level, but the idea, as Wally pointed out, the R2A, which would be the RN3 in the new structure, really would give you the option, and once that preamble's out of the way, you could rezone areas to that lot size, so.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Wethel?
I guess as I read through the materials and the 53-page document was really interesting for me. So, Arista, I'm a nurse practitioner, but I really dig this stuff. It's really interesting, and I appreciate, it felt like you knew our city when you did this. So thank you. And speaking with you this evening and hearing you, it sounds the same. So you've taken the time, it sounds like, to learn our community and maybe unique things about us. I really appreciate it. When it comes to, Wally, when you present to us a zoning change, you do kind of break it down almost the way that matrix looked.[1723.53] break it down almost the way that matrix looks. And, but this larger, more broad matrix to me is like that, but more user-friendly for the entire process. So I love that idea. I know we asked for that, right? I mean, as a council, we said, let's simplify this, let's get it to a point where people literally, I think, I don't remember who it was when we first started these processes, but can we have it in a grid or an algorithm? And so this is a beautiful example of that. I think Arkansas could, we could adapt from Arkansas to us. The memorializing of the corner store, just one comment in that I feel sometimes that when we have examples that you, Arista, mentioned, where we have maybe an individual corner store, longstanding family business, that when there's any rezoning of that property, neighbors get nervous about what that's going to look like, maybe not for that person, but what about the next business that wants to buy that property, right? And so the idea that, that we're kind of honing in and making that a unique experience of zoning, I think is so smart. So very Dubuque-y's in the way we'll do that. And environmental standards for lighting. Ms. Farber mentioned lighting a bit. My question is, and when I look through the document, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed lighting specificity, you touched on the environmental lighting. Would that go under landscaping or where, where does lighting go?
Lighting goes in the general standard section. What you probably saw in the document was speaking about the benefits of putting some controls on exterior lighting so that it has some environmental benefits as well as, again, you don't really write this in a tech report to stop neighbors from fighting with each other, but that's really what that is. So it's not really environmental lighting, it's just lighting standards that have an environmental benefit. So it may just be phrased wrong. There's ways to do lighting that get very intense, but that requires having that level of staff and expertise on staff and everything to do that. And sometimes a whole completely different lighting study to do. What we're doing is just kind of very simple things that protects everybody and the birds, so.
And I love the environmental inspiration for it, but when we, for instance, talking to people on Central who want to live in the second and third floor of those old historic structures, if we don't have lighting on our streets positioned correctly, those lights shine right in those second and third story windows, right? So we've got to be intentional about that, but I can understand that it's hard to be intentional from different area of town to the next, so.
And to be clear, in the UDC, what we can address is lighting on private property, so things like parking lots or if somebody's, the building's setback and they want to do some lighting in front, we can't, we're not doing the streetlights, so, which is typically where you see a lot of the issues, in particular in that, come up. I mean, we can address lighting, lighting's going to end up being addressed within signs as well, sign illumination, that comes into play as well, too. So it'll be touching on certain things that may cause problems, but once you're on the street, the kind of the UDC's out of the picture.
Gotcha. Okay. One last question. How do you standardize traffic studies?
How do you standardize just when it's required?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm going to figure that out.
Okay.
But really, it is, it's really kind of looking at it, looking at what it's been used for here, kind of having somebody at the office do a little bit more digging on it. We've done some traffic study research before for other towns, but we need to kind of pare it down to comparables with, with Dubuque. We need to do that. I don't have the answer yet. Thank you.
Let's do everybody else first and I'll come back. Mr. Resney?
Sure, thank you. So thanks for this report. So just to get the process down again, so these recommendations will go to a staff review and the staff might change these recommendations before they send it to us, the city council. Is that true?
Not this report. This report's done.
Right, sure.
Yeah, so it'll be, we'll be seeing what comments come in from folks that maybe have watched this meeting, a couple, the few people that were at the meeting last night, anybody that's, you know, been digesting it on the website. And then that will inform us in drafting. The next thing that's coming out publicly is going to be a full draft of the UDC, which is going to look very different from the one that you have now, because obviously, we can't do a red line comparison. We're going from one organization to another. I mean, the codes are going to be radically different. So that will be the first thing that comes out publicly, will be that first public draft of the UDC. Obviously, take that out of roadshow, public open houses, get a lot of public input, likely appear before you during that trip to just tell you, hey, here's that draft. And that's where we take comment on that from everybody. And then there's a draft two, which is a red line draft that shows the changes from draft one to draft two, just to say, hey, everybody, we listen, here's the changes that were made. And then after that is when you get, and we'll, we'll come back to you to show you the red line draft as well. So it's, everybody's going to see it. And then, then you will act, then we should, per the process, end up at a public hearing draft where you would be starting the official formal adoption process.
Just to clarify though, Mr. Wernamont mentioned that the staff is going to look over this and before it gets to us, it will go through our executive staff and his.
Yeah, I mean, we need to, I'm going to draft the, I mean, I'm going to be back at the office drafting the code. It's going to have big holes in it and questions that I don't have the answers to, that I need to go through with staff to analyze that document, fill in the holes, have them review it, make sure I got everything right. And then that internal draft becomes the public draft.
All right, thank you.
I hope I'm not missing something, is that?
Well, I'm sure there's, and there's a variety of the things that could happen. We're at the beginning of this process.
Yes, we're at the very, very beginning.
Right, so, and you did say that you would like to have some input about the no parking minimums.
Sure.
So I'm going to give you those a little bit.
Okay.
So you mentioned, it was mentioned in the paper about La Crosse, Wisconsin. So I did a, you know, search about.
Yeah, I don't know anything, I don't know where La Crosse, I didn't say La Crosse.
Okay, I'm just talking about that there was a, La Crosse, Wisconsin, was mentioned in a newspaper article and they voted to eliminate parking mandates. So I just wanted to see, you know, what was going on and how that community reacted. And, and, and so there are issues, right? And, you know, you've heard good fences make good neighbors, but the modern version is good parking makes good neighbors. And it's all about respect and mutual consideration. You know, we bill our city on the quality of life, right? So, and there's something worse than too much parking and that's too little parking, especially in the neighborhoods. And the neighbors start, you know, why is this neighbor's park, you know, parking right in front of my house? I had to park two blocks away, you know, those kind of things. That was happening in La Crosse and those type of things. So I would just like to say we should be very careful about that type of thing. I know that we do have conditional use and you kind of poo-pooed conditional use or overuse of conditional use, but that could include parking. Maybe I got that wrong. But, you know, in our website, it says the benefits of zoning can ensure the availability of parking options. And I, and I think that's really, still really important. And it seems to me that it, it puts the burden of parking from the developers to the residents instead of, you know, they could build a place and not enough parking and then all of a sudden, who's dealing with that? Well, it's the residents of course, and then they come to us. I mean, we've had some school issues where, you know, there's some issues, not enough parking at the schools, these cars invade all the neighborhoods and, you know, there's an uproar and we have to try and find some kind of a, a solution to this. So I just think it's, it's very important, the multifamily, et cetera, they need to have certain amount of parking. And I understand, you know, you know, historical considerations, but it is a reality that we need to, to realize that there are cars out there and they need to go somewhere. And I don't think it's a, a problem for us to consider that when we're zoning. And again, if it's, if it's something that's unusual, then we can do the conditional use zoning. So other ideas, I think they're, they're well worth talking about and I'm glad you brought them forward. But, you know, again, you invited input, that's my, my personal input about that. And so again, thank you very much and I'm always keeping an open mind and I'm looking forward to all these red lines coming our way and, and the recommendation of the planning staff and of our executive staff as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
I'm pretty impressed. I was really impressed in 2009 when we were able to cram those three codes into one document and make it easier. The goal then, of course, and the goal now, is to make it easier for somebody who wants to do something to find out what they have to do to get it done. And we're going to be so much closer to that than we got in 2009. We were so much closer in 2009 than we were every single day before that. So that part's very impressive. Do want to tag on to the parking discussion a little bit. House I grew up in, there were seven people living in and one car. And the house I live in now, there's two people living in and two cars. And most houses have way more than one car. The challenge for Dubuque probably isn't going to be so much impacted by this code because it's mostly about new things. But the challenge for Dubuque is all these downtown residences in particular, where there used to be one car or none because you could walk to every place you had to get, are now places that have three and four and five cars. And so I'm not sure if zoning is where we fix that, but it's probably where that conversation needs to at least occur when we're looking at, at changing the use of a property. So David's kind of spot on, that's, the bigger problem is not enough parking than, than too much parking, although I get that a lot of parking's been overbuilt. And, you know, the whole world changed with who's going to work and who's staying home and doing the work from home five years ago when, when an unprecedented event swept the country and we all reacted to it. So we're on a good path here. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of the public input that's been gathered. I'm thrilled to hear you say that you're a little overwhelmed at the amount of it.
No, seriously, you're the biggest. I have never gotten a response that high.
Because it's easy, people accuse us all the time of not being transparent. I've never, never been in a council or never seen a council that does a better job of trying to, your goal is always citizen engagement on a large scale. And without knocking on every door and saying, hey, we're thinking about doing this, what do you think? It's almost impossible to get much of it. And I think we're doing a little better shaking the trees and getting people to, to speak up and give us a fighting chance to, to do what they'd like us to do, or at least understand what they'd like us to do when we're trying to sort these things out. So good work. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing the next project, product. And I think we're, we're taking a giant step to make it easier to, to develop, to change, to modify, to come up with new ideas for property uses. Good luck to all of us.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
So we have a couple of issues going on with, with mobile home parks. So where does that fall under our code for basically maintenance of them? And then two, you mentioned you didn't like tiny homes or you kind of had a little hesitation against tiny homes?
I was specifically not trying to indicate the cottage court was filled with tiny homes because, because a tiny home, I mean, it's a whole kind of variety of what is a tiny home? If it's just, if it's on a chassis, it's just an RV, it's just a small RV kind of thing. I have no personal opinion on a tiny home. I cannot live in one. I have many cats and a husband. We, we just wouldn't move. But I, you know, in terms of mobile home parks, we'll need to, we'll need to look at that and see where they're going. I can't, I honestly don't remember what's in the current code, so I cannot speak to that. But it is an issue, we need to make sure we're aligning with all of the kind of the federal regs that come into play. The code can talk about where they can go, what they can be designed like, what the streets are like, what the pads are like, what, you know, if there's any kind of, you know, when you need to do stuff around the bottom, then I can't remember the word for. But if it's an existing home and the maintenance is poor and there's operational issues, that's now outside of this code.
Gotcha. Where would community land trust fall under? Because that may become an issue that I know that, that Project 2030 is looking at is community land trust, because I would like that to kind of be like a possible future issue that we might need to be addressing soon.
That's again, that's a type of ownership.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just subject to the zoning, so.
Anybody else? Got all of our questions answered so far? Okay. I'll echo the thanks. This is, this is great. I mean, this is a great start to this discussion and I love hearing the fact that so many, that it's the most you've ever seen for input. I mean, that speaks very highly of our entire community, so I love that part. I'll just say a couple of comments first and then I do have several questions. So first of all, nobody's talked about the PUD stuff yet, but that's a really intriguing idea, the idea of adding another layer on top of a zoning that already exists and then the expiration of that, so you don't have a PUD that's just sitting there on the books forever. I mean, that, that's a really intriguing idea. I'll be interested to hear what, what, especially people who have, who have developed within a PUD, I'll be interested to hear what their feedback is and then along with staff, too. I'm not sure I have enough knowledge from working with PUDs here in this role that I would know kind of all the ins and outs of it. So it'd be really interesting to hear some of that feedback. The, you know, I'm, I'm more intrigued by the parking thing than anything else. I mean, I have, I guess I do have a question about that, so I'll hold on the parking thing for a second. Okay, maybe I am down to questions. So the, the district, can we go back to the District 2A and turning it into a District R3 thing? I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. This is where, you said, Wally, this is where we might have some more flexibility to be able to shrink the lot size for smaller builds, if we want to do a residential lot size that's smaller?
You already have it, yeah.
We already have it, so it would basically.
You already have it. It's just a renaming. RN3, threes are just sequential, nothing to do with the sizes. So RN3 would be, your R2A would become RN3.
Okay.
It's just a name change.
Got it. Okay, all right. Helpful, thank you. What would happen, so you use the term radical, radical change or radical difference, I think, and that always, I think, makes people a little bit nervous. So I'm just curious, you know, like, as we go through this, I know we're going to have time to look at it. I very much appreciate that we're going to have so much public input on this and be able to look at this. But, you know, when we, we talk about zoning, I often find myself going to our current zoning map that we have for the, you know, the GIS zoning map. What happens to something like that? I mean, what can people expect to see as we go through this change? And I guess my other question is, who's going to make the decisions on how that zoning, the current zoning changes, like what we have currently zoned? Who's going to make the decision on how that fits into the new UDC?
I'm going to start and then you can jump. So essentially, what we would do in this process is, as you saw, a lot of your, a lot of the districts we're recommending are based on existing districts. So things just get equivalent. So RN1 equals R1. So everything that's R1 is now just RN1. The name has changed. I mean, some of the standards may change, we may tweak them, we talked about front yard averaging, but essentially, you would do, the first step would be an equivalence. And that would cover basically everything that's currently on the map. It would have these new district names. And then after that, you could make decisions where you want to change them, but the process for changing the zoning map comes to rest at your feet and you would make the decision as council that the zoning map change is appropriate. Is that it?
Pretty much, yeah, that's exactly. So especially as we look at the zoning map, you know, the, you know, the straight up zones are a little bit easier. Actually, what's happening with the zoning code is we're actually making more properties conforming, especially when we look at the R2 districts and you saw the GIS analysis map in there, certain things. So it's not actually going to make more properties non-conforming, which is usually the concern. The concern is when you do an update to a zoning ordinance, we're going to make more properties that were permitted by right, not compliant. Well, that's not going to happen with the current proposal that's going through. We're actually bringing more properties into compliance that were probably initially in compliance and then in the 1970 ordinance, made them non-compliant and then now we're trying to bring them back to like where it was. So zoning is an ever-changing document. Like I said, it's not set in stone. There's a whole process we have to go through in order to, to occur and approve those. Other things that we talk about is, you know, when we talk about like our high-density multifamily residential right now, we're handling that through OR zoning and through PUDs. So that RN, that new district, the RN5 district, would be a district where you look at where there's existing OR district or it makes sense for that to be applied. Once again, not making that property non-compliant, but also just bringing it into more, more, more compliance, I guess, it should make it more uniform, I guess, across the board. So, but when we do look at amending the map or making changes, that's still going to require going through the zoning advisory commission and the city council for the public hearing. So that's part of the adoption process. We're also required to put that in the paper. All, all the information that gets provided, the entire UDC will be published in the paper along with the zoning map. That's something that we have to do every time we do an update. But I want to address that radical change comment you brought on. And from a, from a planning standpoint, we see the radical change as the organization structure, you're opening the document, hey, this really cool use table that you talked about, Katie, right? It's a lot easier to follow. A lot of the information that's already being presented to you is already existing. It's trying to put it in an easier user format to be able to be read and to break it up into certain sections, into their own sections. Like the floodplain regulations are all the same, they're just going to be in a different location. A lot of the permitted uses are in there, are just going to be a little bit more, a little bit more clear. One thing I like to talk about when we did the Unified Development Code and some of the other things is, when they did the zoning ordinance in 1970 and what was carried through to 85 ordinance and 2009 ordinance is, they didn't want to make anyone non-conforming, so we have a C4 district that lists like every single thing on the face of the earth. Shoe repair, typewriter repair, that's all retail sales and service. So taking a lot of those uses and condensing them into a generic term allows us flexibility allows us flexibility as staff to allow different uses that come in that are not specifically listed. So for example, doggy daycare was not a big thing a few years ago. It's very big right now. Well, we didn't have a doggy daycare use, right? So we had to like, okay, where does that fit into? Does that fit into kennel lane? Does that fit into animal hospital? You know, but those are only allowed in this district, but doggy daycare would be appropriate over here. So these are the things that allows a little bit more flexibility and allow staff to make a little bit more determination when we look at the impact of that on a surrounding area without having to go through a text amendment to the Zoning Advisory Commission, city council. Does it just make sense by right for those types of things? So long-winded answer for you.
No, it's a helpful answer. I missed shoe repair, by the way. It was useful at times. So final question here, the parking. Do we, because, you know, one of the things that I think is important is we're not trying to fit a code from somewhere else into Dubuque and Dubuque's culture and what Dubuque is. So we're going to make it our own. But as we do that, have you ever seen anybody do the parking where you reduce or you take away the minimums in certain zones, kind of like we have now, and that works?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, what you have, there's a number, so, now you have the word radical on my mind. The most radical way to do it is just take out all minimum parking requirements and just let the market do what the market does. Then there's just a number of ways that you can work this. You can require it for only certain districts. You can tier them out. You can do sets of parking requirements between the districts. So there's a whole kind of rainbow of ways to do this. What you're doing right now, where you've exempted the downtown area, and I think there's a handful of historic districts that are exempted, fairly common, good process. And as we said, if we're not going to go the route of full getting rid of them all, we really need to take a look at some of these other districts and see if maybe they'll, they'll be eligible. When we did it in Hot Springs, we initially started with exempting out, we initially said we're getting rid of all parking minimums. What they did, they just kept it for residential districts and exempted anything that's in a commercial district, just residential uses in residential districts, and then got rid of everything everywhere else. So there's ways to work this. There's no one way that's right. It is exactly as you just said. This is for Dubuque and the way Dubuque functions. So I'm not here, I mean, there are many people and planners that will come and proselytize to you and tell you no minimum parking requirements. I like it, I think it's a good idea. I've seen it work, but it doesn't work for everybody. So, and that's, we'll just kind of keep working with it and see kind of where we end up. But, you know, we'll start from where you are now, which is downtown and these other areas that are exempt from it. You know, we're not going to go backwards.
Sure, yeah. Right, thank you. All right, anything further before we, yeah, Ms. Farber?
Just want to talk to you again about the corner stores. So again, in addition to the food trucks, I have a corner store. And it is in a resident.
You have a lot.
I do. But I do have a corner store, and I very much appreciate the fact that we had an ordinance that said eight parking spots, but I could use the handicap spots that were on the contiguous street. And I would believe that the residents around our corner store are very appreciative of the fact that I have eight off-street parking bays for the customers. So I'm just, you know, my thought that, you know, in some of the residential areas, especially in the area that I live in, there's another restaurant that just opened up, too, and they have a parking. I'm not quite sure what the relationship there is with their off-the-street parking versus the on-the-street parking. But that's two examples, I think, of store, corner stores that actually enhance the neighborhood and create gathering places for the neighbors and just, I think, add to the ambiance of the neighborhood. So I'm hoping those don't necessarily all go away.
Oh, I don't want to get rid of corner stores.
No, I'm talking about the parking.
Oh, no, I mean, and honestly, the thing is, is just to say, if you look at ideas like not requiring parking, it doesn't mean that people won't build parking. The studies have shown that they are. They continue, in particular in commercial. We worked on the Buffalo, New York code, probably the longest-standing one. The big city got rid of all minimum parking requirements. And it was a few years ago they worked on it, probably almost 10 years ago. People are still building parking in Buffalo. I mean, it's still happening when they can do it. So again, I'm just providing evidence. This is a policy decision that comes down to you all, but just throwing some evidence out there. And, you know, typically, we're just, you know, it's for us, if we don't want to go all that way, we want to make sure that we can make adaptive reuse easier, too. I think that's a, that's a key one here because I know a lot of it is historic, and we want to preserve those things that may not even be designated. So we want to make it easy for people to use those buildings.
Right, but I'm just talking about the community within and the neighborhoods within. So just to have a caution there in that respect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Spring?
Theoretically, we approve all this.